And I'm working on a couple more, as was discussed, for the Congress for the Assistant's Office and one for IT for the Geospatial, what's the name of that?
GIS.
GIS, stuff that he does out with his camera.
Yeah.
Because he spends most of his time changing tires.
My only question on this is, okay, we're getting new vehicles, that's great, because we do need to keep that fleet up to date. What are we trading in, or what are we getting rid of to take in all these new vehicles?
We have a fleet of very old and semi worthless vehicles. The, we're gonna be auctioning those off, or redeploying them throughout the county. I know the airport could use a couple, maintenance may be able to use a couple, and then Townsboro might be able to use one. So, we're gonna figure out how to best redeploy those and use those, or sell them at auction, Richard.
Okay, well, the question I have on that is, if they're already old and outdated and pretty much useless, why are we even attempting to do whatever, give them to different departments when they're gonna need more maintenance? So, why don't we just take the best vehicles that we have, and have them looked at and see which ones are the best? And then, form a list of what we want to dispose of, either by auction or by sale? Because I just don't want to see us grabbing a whole bunch of additional buildings, equipment, and having it put in the boneyard somewhere and just sit there forever. So, as long as we're buying the cars, I got no problem with the cars. But I do have a problem with us gaining a whole bunch of stuff that's gonna sit out probably at the county shop or somewhere until we decide to sell. We need to act on that and make that one of our first priorities. As we take these new vehicles and put them on, be sure that we got an agenda item or something to go ahead and identify those outdated worthless cars. Do something with them, probably auction them off, but let's get that done, so that we don't have all new cars and then a whole bunch of old cars. I just don't want a junkyard.
I appreciate that, Richard, and I think you hit the nail on the head. We'll have to agendize that in a future agenda discussed at that time.
Because we are getting a collection back there. It looks icky, for lack of a technical term.
Yeah, yeah, either get a builder that can, that'll refer them, or get them to a shredder.
Yeah.
All right, I'll look for a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor? Aye.
I do.
I think I heard Ian say aye. Okay, passion anonymous. Okay, we'll go to our nine thirty. Ordinance five twenty-one, about feral cats. Discussion only regarding ordinance five twenty-one, Title eight oh four dot one three on ordinance that ban the providing of substance in any county park to feral cats, feral cats and/or cats that have become a nuisance and request to quantify in the ordinance quite routinely and disturb me. Samantha, Pheno, King Biologist, and Dow.
Chairman, I need to let you know that Samantha is appearing as a private citizen, not as a representative from Dow. My apologies.
Okay. And if I could just preface this, I actually directed Nicole to change this to discussion only, because if we're going to amend an ordinance, we have to go through a certain procedure or something.
Sure, yeah, and I wasn't really sure of the process. Andrew Hayes kind of advised me to start here. I also want to point out ordinance five two-one is for barking dogs, not for feral cats, unless it's different on your website.
Yeah, I don't have it memorized, though.
Oh, yeah? So, actually, I'm here to talk about barking dogs. I will read eight point oh four point one three oh to you all, just for freshness. Within White Pine County is unlawful for a dog owner to keep, harbor, or maintain a dog that routinely howls, barks, whines, yelps, or in any other manner disturbs the peace or quietude of the community or of any person. So, there's not really a lot of definition in there. I guess just for background, I'm new to White Pine County. I moved here in January, very excited to immerse myself in this community and make White Pine County home. You know, I'm a young, single woman, so these dogs are not only my pets, but they sort of serve as an alarm system for myself. As a neighbor, I am tolerant to kids riding their ATVs after dark, outdoor cats that defecate in my yard, and other dogs in the neighborhood that bark at all times of the day and night, there's about five. And many of these things do provoke my personal dogs. So, you know, just as background as to why I'm here, there is a neighbor in our neighborhood who is sensitive to dogs that are barking, although I've never been contacted by this individual directly. And my yard is the only one in the neighborhood that you can see through the chain link fence. I feel that my dogs have often been misblamed for these occurrences. And I've taken measures to alleviate such issues, such as putting panels through my chain link fence, I put out bark collars on my dogs, so I'm taking these measures. Although my dogs, when they bark, it's typically, again, at those disturbances in the neighborhood, so they're either, you know, being provoked by things that just go on. And it is during the day, you know, two P M. on a Wednesday, it's not at midnight. So, I'm understanding to when these complaints occur, you know, whether it's after dark, long periods of time, et cetera. And I feel that Andrew Hayes, the animal control individual, is being often inconvenienced for non-serious or non-disrupting matters. And I believe that this is wasting some of his time, which could be used for more important issues. So, I would like to see that verbiage is added to this, to define what barking dogs are, so that a balance between dog owners and sensitive neighbors are met in the middle. So, I have some examples, which I can read to you, or I've highlighted and can hand out. I've only printed out four different counties across the U.S., although there are hundreds of these throughout the nation. So, this one, I will just read a few. A barking dog is considered one that barks for thirty minutes or more incessantly, nonstop, or sixty minutes or more accumulated intermittently in a twenty-four hour period. It goes on to define what incessant and intermittent is. Such extended periods of time shall consist of incessant barking for thirty minutes or more in a twenty-four hour period, or intermittent barking that accumulates to a total of sixty minutes or more during a twenty-four hour period. So, that is one. The second one is from California, of Yew County. Incessant barking for sixty minutes or more in any twenty-four hour period, or intermittent barking for sixty minutes or more during any twenty-four hour period. And it does say in this, in their version of their county law, that they encourage neighbors to speak to the dog owner prior to filing complaints. This one is in Sussex County in Delaware. Excessive barking, any dog that barks for a continuous period of thirty minutes or more is considered to be engaging of an excessive dog barking. But the exemption, which I like in this example, any dog that is deliberately provoked by a trespasser or intentionally teased is exempt from this code for the incident. And it goes into breaking down what first offense, second offense, and third is in a monetary way. This is the last one, I'll read to you. West, City of West Lynn in Oregon. Frequent or continuing noise for a period of fifteen minutes and an hour emitted by an animal for which a person is responsible, except for animals provoked by a person trespassing, threatening to trespass, or unambiguous taunting of the animal. So, again, the numbers to me, or the timeframe is not specific. You guys can choose what is best for White Pine County, but I feel that further defining this ordinance would be beneficial to the community.
Yeah, I think have our DA's office, like, put some language together and bring that back to us.
And if you could, if you could call my office and set an appointment, we can discuss further exactly what you're, either on the phone or in person. And we can discuss some of the particulars that you're looking at and get into this a little more detail. Put something together, and then we can follow the process to amend any ordinance that we need to do.
Perfect.
I'd like to see one thing in there, and that's a real firm thing about how many dogs a person can have within city limits, because you run around, somebody's got two, but there's other people that got four or five. As we do the ordinance, if you can research that, to make it, put some teeth into how many dogs a person can have. One dog can make a lot of noise, but if they got four or five, some people do.
Yeah, I believe we do have an ordinance on this.
Okay, if we do.
I'll double check that.
And.
I believe it is three or more, but I could be wrong.
If we highlight that, then let everybody know exactly how many they can have. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for your interest or attention. Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, nine thirty-eight, so we will jump back to finish up Kathy's items. Got item E, discussion for possible action, approval of the U.S. Department of the Treasury Local Assistance and Private Consistency Fund, award terms and conditions for receiving the American Rescue Plan Act funding.
So, this is not something we applied for, this is just something that's available to us. It is two, like, two million, almost three million this year, for the ARPA funds.
What are we gonna do with it, Kathy? What, what's the goal with?
So, we can either set it aside, like we did last year, for specific ARPA projects, or my plan is to use the final rule again, use it against payroll. And that way, when we use it against payroll, we can use it for any project. I think the project I have on my plate right now that isn't funded is the Art Center. I think the choir director and stuff was here last week, and I think they're in need of about a hundred and seventy-five thousand. So, I don't know that we want to use all of it, or supply all of it, but I think it's a good project starter. Michael is also looking to get more fire and rescue things, and maybe a sheriff vehicle, and we had like, like a list of small things that we could use it on. But if we move it out of the ARPA fund and use the final rule again, then we don't have to follow all the ARPA guidelines. So, it's easier to say, hey, we're gonna use the ARPA fund for payroll, and then we're gonna use the money for anything we want, because it'll be basically contingency.
Anything to add on that, Mike?
I just want to clarify what we're talking about. The final rule talks about how we can utilize those ARPA funds, and one is to utilize it for payroll that's been budgeted to run operations, right? So, if we do that, then that frees up some of our other general fund monies that we then can spend as we want to without.
That's what I wanted to hear, yes.
That's how we understand the reading of this.
You need to speak up, I can't hear you.
Sorry. Okay, any other questions about this? If not, I'll look for a motion.
Am I gonna make the motion for that, too?
I'll do it.
I'll do it.
Well, we didn't want you to have to make the second one.
Okay, motion from Richard.
Second from Shane.
Second from Shane. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Okay, item F, discussion for possible action, approval of quarterly grant reports. Kathy.
Tabitha, maybe on? No?
There's only one in there.
Yeah.
Just one of the projects.
Yeah, she is on. Is there anything on this item, Tabitha, for us?
I, I looked it over, I can go ahead and make a motion to approve it.
It's just one.
Yeah.
I'll look for a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ian? Right?
Can you mind hearing me now?
There's that.
You're in trouble, Terry.
Sorry, I was having issues with my meal. You guys thought there was only one grant repubbing this?
Thought there was, it was a snipoma.
Oh, there, there should have been a stack of them, but anyway, yeah, it's just basically your regular quarterly report. Status updates where we are financially. And if you guys have any questions, you can either ask me or the department head for the department that's over each set of grants.
Well, while we're doing this, can you give us just a brief rundown of what the, what the snipoma projects are that we have out there, outstanding? Just name them, or whatever you want to do.
Yeah, Richard, I'm gonna be a wet blanket again, and I apologize, but this, this is just for the grant reports.
Okay, what?
Yeah, and then there's.
We can do an update on snipoma next agenda.
There's, there's a couple in there, but it's kind of self-explanatory of what's been done, and it tells you what the achievements are and.
Okay, that's all. I'll wait until some other time. Aye. You all right, Mike?
I know.
We, and we did approve.
Occasionalities.
We did approve the grants, Tabitha.
Okay.
The update.
Okay, thank you, Tabitha. Okay, we're at nine forty-three.
Just Nicole.
All right, item four, Nicole Ballen, County Kirk, discussion for possible action, approval of the canvas of the vote for the twenty twenty-two general election in White Pine County.
Thank you, Chairman. I added the canvas of the vote to the backup material online towards the end of yesterday. Yesterday's workday, so it's online. And the originals are slipped in to the backup material, to those who request paper packets. In regards to Mr. Larson's public comment, he did come and address this issue with me, and I want to thank him for bringing this issue to the, to the board, because it's important that if there is a question out there, that it gets resolved. So, in regards to this question, I didn't really know how to answer it to Mr. Larson directly the other day. I directed him to the Secretary of State themselves, because I don't maintain the Secretary of State's website. And my understanding is he got hold of them, and they gave him an explanation that they reported that he was okay with. And that explanation was, the status of the votes don't change until ballots are, until ballots counted until after canvases are approved. So, there's certain steps in my voter registration system that I take following the approval of the canvas, and that's officially posting vote history to voters' individual records, which is where the voters are gonna see the change, that their ballot was counted. I have not checked his websites myself, but I know that if, you know, if what he's saying is accurate, it's saying that ballots were received, but, but not that they were counted in all actuality. They were absolutely counted, every ballot that was in my possession by seven o'clock on November eighth was counted and tabulated, and those results are what you see on the county website, as well as on the Nevada Secretary of State election reporting website. And they are part of what makes up the total votes counted for the state of Nevada that elected our state and local officials. Following the canvas approval today, I will be posting that vote history, and it will be updating voter records across the board to say that their ballots were counted. So, I hope that answers any questions. Do you guys have any questions about that?
I appreciate the answer. I had the same question, because I get the notification on my ballot. And as of this morning, still shows not counted, so that's, and, and granted, with these dragged-out counts in Nevada and Arizona, I mean, hopefully, we get on the ball and realize that, that this creates distrust in the election process on the state level. I have no doubt that my vote was counted in White Pine County. I just want assurance that it's counted on the state level, and so, I appreciate that answer, that's great.
Right, and it's hard to understand why that's not done until, I mean, it makes one hesitant to even approve the canvas of the vote if people are telling you that they don't, they're concerned that their vote hasn't been already counted. You know, it's kind of putting the cart before the horse, is kind of, you know, although, you know, to me, it seems like would be just the opposite, so that people, before the vote was canvassed, that they would have the assurance that their vote had already been cast, especially if there's a website for them to go to, and it's not included. So, I don't know, Nicole.
Certainly, it's, it's very confusing, and, believe me, every single election year, these same complaints come back, especially since there's programs in place like ballot tracts. And I can tell you, I personally experienced issues with ballot tracts. I opted out of mail-in voting, and ballot tracts sent me a text message and an email saying the county clerk's office would mail me my ballot. And I let the Secretary of State's office know that I opted out, I won't be getting a ballot in the mail, why is this happening? They investigated it, they said that they weren't working out bugs. I hadn't voted, and I got another text message and email that said that I should have received my ballot, and I should, you know, not forget to vote it in to turn it in on November eighth. And again, I let the Secretary of State's office know that I was sending this erroneous messages. And so, it's a, unfortunately, it's an imperfect system that creates a lot of confusion and misinformation out there that does, I can see how it, it kind of decreases voter confidence in the election system. But these notification systems are separate from what happens actually with people's votes and, and the reporting of the results. And I just want to somehow reassure everyone that, irregardless of what the notification says, the software that the Secretary of State's office has contacting people, votes were absolutely counted across the state, and you can see those results at silverstateelection.nv.gov. That's the statewide results website. And our unofficial results on November eighth were provided to the public after that time. So, what you're looking at in front of you is my final official results for the election. Following the evening of November eighth, I received thirty-nine ballots in the mail that were postmarked by November eighth, that did arrive to the courthouse by Saturday, the twelfth. I went to the post office myself and picked them up there on Saturday, because the courthouse wasn't open. And I counted thirty-nine additional ballots. I was able to verify fifty-seven same-day registration voters. Those are voters who are not registered to vote before our official deadlines. They show up at the polls during early voting, on Election Day with their Nevada driver's license, and they register to vote and vote at the same time. There ran through a multi-county cast vote system, where we're able to see if they were registered in another jurisdiction, if they were issued a ballot, and if they voted and turned in that ballot in another jurisdiction. And I can say that we had no same-day registrants, or even regular voters who attempted to vote twice in the state of Nevada for this election. According to the canvas in front of you, we had a total of five thousand two hundred and thirty-six active registered voters at the time of the election. What that means, active registered voters are people with good addresses. When, we have several hundred inactive voters, and that's, they become inactive when we try to send them something and the post office kicks it back with either a return, undeliverable notification, or a forwarding address in a local or out-of-state jurisdiction. And the process to remove inactive voters from our system is not as easy as it seems. We have to keep them in an inactive status for no less than two federal general elections, so that's a presidential election. And they, they must be inactive during that timeframe and not cast a vote during that timeframe, and then we can remove them. So, those are our active registered voters. We counted three thousand four hundred and sixty-two votes in this general election. And of that, we had one thousand thirty-four election day voters. I don't know if you guys noticed on your sample ballots, but this general election, we added a new election day polling place. Tribes are able to request a polling location at, on their land, and I basically have no choice but to provide that, and we did. At the educational center, it was really smooth, they were great to work with, and I think they had maybe fifty-one voters show up at their location. But it, it wasn't a huge hindrance, however, looking forward to the future in twenty twenty-four, being presidential election and having multiple election day polling locations, I, I think I may come back in a year or two asking for more election machines. If you, if you happen to come to the convention center at certain times of the day, we have lines for almost an hour. And that was a little concerning, because the voter cards, I was always told that they, they, your vote, your ballot inactivates after maybe thirty minutes or so. Thankfully, we didn't experience that, but that's just looking to the future, I think we might want more voting machines. We received five hundred and sixty early voters in the new courthouse. They kept us quite busy. Mail-in ballots, I received eighteen hundred and sixty-eight mail-in ballots, and that equated to a White Pine County turnout of sixty-six point one two percent. I received about twenty-five ballots for voter signatures that did not match the signature on record or that were missing. And of those thirteen were cured, meaning the voters either came in person and provided proof of their driver's license, and that they had actually signed that ballot, or the letters that I sent out gave them an opportunity to go to the Nevada Secretary of State's website and access, I think it's a web address, that allowed them to take pictures with their cell phone of their driver's license, and then take a picture of, of themselves and sign online and cure their signatures that way. I had, I had seven signatures cured that way. And then, seven, seven and six more cured them either in person or through the mail. So, a total of thirteen ballots were cured. I still have a stack of twelve voters who failed to cure their ballots within the timeframe, so twelve ballots were not counted. I reported earlier, all my same-day registrations met the Nevada driver's license and physical address requirement, and their ballots were all counted. And that's it. You guys have any questions?
Certainly appreciate your, your detailed explanation.
Thank you very much.
Have there been any formal protests on the election, anyone, that you know of?
That I know of, no. I, I try not to watch the election news.
I'm just trying to make a vote. I'm just trying to make a vote, I don't want you doing this, I asked that question. If you don't know, then that's fine.
We didn't have as many angry complainers this election as we have had in the past, thankfully. As far as protesting goes, no. I had a gentleman from another state come in and try to same-day register with an out-of-state driver's license, saying something like, he couldn't, he's been trying to get a Nevada driver's license here for a couple of years, and he blamed the DMV, and he said something that I was standing in the way of his ability to vote. But I can only do so much when it comes to same-day registering. If it was a presidential election, I could have let him vote provisionally for president or vice president, but that wasn't the case this time.
Great, thank you. I'll go ahead and make, make a motion to approve the canvas of the vote for the twenty twenty-two election.
Get a second?
I guess that's me, yeah.
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Oh.
Four ayes and one no.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yep, we heard you.
I, I wanted to make it real clear, though, White Pine County is probably the only county in the state of Nevada where we actually had free fair elections. The rest of the state is absolutely corrupt, and this is the second time we've had an awful, awful election, and I will not vote to support that.
Okay, item B, discussion for possible action, approval to set a special commission meeting on Wednesday, January fourth, twenty twenty-three, at nine thirty A.M.
I'll make a motion to approve that. That's for getting a second or new commission for the year.
Yes, this is immediately following the swearing-in, which will be at eight thirty in the morning at the new courthouse for the newly-elected public officers, and so, yes, this meeting is needed.
So, are you gonna second that, too, or you want me to second that?
You can second that.
Okay, I'll second that.
Thank you very much.
All right, all those in favor? Aye. Ian?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, we'll go back to our find items. Nine forty-five, liquor board meeting, no one from the sheriff's office can be here, so he handed me this baguette. Discussion for possible action, approval of a request for a liquor license to James Jordan of White Pine Productions for a chili cook-off to be held November eighteenth, twenty twenty-two to be judged at White Pine County Fairgrounds. Sheriff Scott Henry here on Sheriff's Office Letterhead, have your White Pine County Commission. We have an item on the eleven sixteen, twenty twenty-two commission meeting agenda for approval of a liquor license for the White Pine Productions chili cook-off. for approval of a liquor license for the White Pine Productions Chili Cook-Off. Due to training or representatives from the Sheriff's Office will not be able to attend.